There you go.
All right, that is 5:30. So we will go ahead and call to order this public hearing for the preliminary engineering report for the wastewater project.
Correct.
All right, let's see if I can, are you sharing the screen? Share screen. And then, how do I?
If, like to minimize that, I think just drag it off to the side and it'll.
There we go. That'll work. All right, um, I'm gonna get that out of the.
If you drag that title bar off to a side, I think it'll stick. Just grab it someplace that's not a button and drag it all the way to a side. Take it to the right side.
Maybe what's part of the.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. All right, good evening. I'm, I know most everybody, but I'm Chad Hanson, okay, what's your name? I'm done, this is Kirsten Sweetie. She's one of our project engineers that has been doing the bulk of the work on wastewater PER for the City Red Lodge, helping me out. We're here tonight to kind of walk through the PER and our findings and where we're going from here. And see the little. So preliminary engineering report is a master facility plan. There's a uniform outline that the state puts out for the various funding agencies. It's comprehensive document, in this case, that looks at the whole wastewater system. We start by evaluating the existing system, quantifying what's there, identifying any deficiencies, regulatory concerns. Then we begin alternative development to address those deficiencies. And we start with anything under the sun, narrow it down to what's viable for the community. And then we get to what we call charts, graphs, and tables, where we sit down with the city personnel and go back and forth and make sure we understand what's going on. And then we go through a selection of the preferred alternative, using a decision matrix that has quite a few different categories and then we weight that one as well. We'll go through that here in a bit. And then once we come up with a preferred alternative, we look at the available funding that's out there, grants, loans, the city's reserves, and come up with a funding and implementation schedule, which is probably the most important part of the PER. So the existing wastewater system for the city, pretty standard. It started construction in the early 1900s with the collection system and treatment system. Major additions over the years included the Country Club Estates, Wilmington Ranch, the Spires, Diamond Sea. In 2011, the two-cell lagoon system was upgraded to a three-cell area lagoon system that still discharges to Rock Creek. There's a headworks that takes out the heavy solids and trash, and then there's ultraviolet disinfection on that fluid. In 2017, we upgraded the lift station on the north end of town, just past the clinic, and put in a new force main, and that collects everything coming off the bench. And instead of pumping it back to town, it used to pump back to town and then flow back around to the lagoons. And we now pump it directly to the lagoon system and turn that old force main that was breaking all the time into a gravity main that goes through the lift station along the golf course there in the brewery. And that freed up a lot of capacity in the main line from the collection system to the lagoons, which was a concern. So we kind of killed a couple birds with that one project in 2017. The system components, the collection system has about 142,000 linear feet of sewer vein and 450 manholes, more than 450. We've documented excessive inflow and infiltration throughout the system and structural defects throughout from video, like the picture there, the boulder coming through the top of the clay pipe. And it's pretty common, it's real cobaly soil, that old vitrified clay pipe is pretty fragile and they didn't use bedding or anything. So unfortunately, Mike and his guys run into that on a regular basis. The pumping stations, there is a lift station up in the Spires, the smaller one, and then the one I just described on Highway 212 that pumps everything off the bench that comes down and then by the golf course there. The treatment system, we touched on that. There's the headworks that consists of a mechanical helical screen, river middle chamber, and grid settling chamber. Then there's a three-cell rated system. That fluid is disinfected with ultraviolet disinfection and then it discharges to Rock Creek, potentially Tanglewood Creek we're working on. This map kind of just shows how the sewer veins are laid out through town. The old part of town, so I was more grid-like blocks, and then up on the bench, it follows the Country Club Estates, the roads. The collection system, as I mentioned, there's quite a bit of INI inflow and infiltration in there. Peak stormwater inflow measured at the lagoons is five NGD, where it's typically under an NGD and should be. But during a big rain event, they get, a lot of water comes flying in and it hits the headworks and actually floods the headworks, where the guys are in there with rakes trying to keep up and have to bypass it. In conjunction with improvements to the wastewater, the city is also doing the stormwater improvements to try and disconnect the sewer, the storm sewer from the sanitary sewer and meet those cross connections. And that's going to have a big impact, especially Phase Two and Three that just started this week.
Two questions?
Yes, sir.
NGD for those of us who don't speak sewer?
Million gallons per day, I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. And then the second question, you said, so we have measures of five million gallons per day, is this something that we anticipate we will be able to look at as the stormwater project is complete and say, yes, that was successful? Is this something we get to use as a metric to?
Absolutely.
To say, this was successful, this is before and this is after?
Yeah, and we're actually excited to do that, to show both the base flows after each phase of the stormwater is done. We'll compare that to Jeff keeps track of the wastewater inflow at the lagoons. And we're hoping to see that it keeps stepping down the base flow. And then we also can graph major precipitation events and see if there's a spike inflow, and hopefully we see smaller spikes or no spikes as we get the stormwater disconnected.
Do we have any expectations of what we're going to see if, like, here's our goal if we're successful, it's going to be, you said, no spikes. Do we see no spikes? How much are we if there's no spikes right now?
The flows.
I think you said one or.
I think they're under one.
They go up in the summer.
Yeah, they go up in the summer. But, I mean, the reality is if there's a storm, there's people with illegal sumps that are pumping basement water into the storm or the sanitary anyway, and so actually you're going to see a peak. We could get those peaks from five million gallons a day down to two million gallons a day. I think that Mike and the guys at the lagoons, they could handle that, attenuate it through without upsetting the treatment process. But the five just totally blows them out of water.
What was it during the flood?
Well, we couldn't even measure it during the flood. The lagoons during the floods were going to overtop until we brought in, not me personally, but Jim and the guys brought in temporary pumps and were pumping into the old lagoon cells as emergency measures. Because it was within inches of overtopping the dikes. But that was, you know, when you had manholes that are literally under water and in the creek, because the creek moved, and so that does a different exception, but.
Even last week, when we get those rainstorms, the guys were out there, it's, one, a good hour of rain is enough to, somebody's there to bypass and rake to keep it from flooding.
And once it's Phase Two and Three, the stormwater comes through here, it'll give most of the cross connections, and then we're working with MBT to get the inlets and Broadway moved over to the new stormwater, that'll make a huge difference. But there's still, during a rain event, you can't get around it. I mean, even the little pickholes and the manholes start sucking water and so, but we want to get that spike down. I would like to see it under two ideally, but I know we can probably get rid of it down to zero. So getting back to the collection system, this is another picture from the video that city personnel have been videoing the lines for us, showing groundwater just pouring in through a broken crack in the old VCP line. So, you know, imagine that 24/7 pouring into the sewer and we're treating groundwater. So that's part of what we need to address and try and get rid of. So the INI flows, well, here you go. Average wastewater flows the last six years have been 713,500 gallons per day. That's your normal flow.
So under a million.
Yeah, I thought it was about 750, but 713. That equates to 309 gallons per cap a day or per person. If we look at the average winter water usage, it's a number we use a lot, like how much water people use, say, in November, December, January, February. A hundred percent of that should be going back to the sewer because you're not watering your lawn, you're not washing cars, you're not. So that's a real good number. If we look at that, the average winter water usage in Red Lodge is about 75 gallons per cap a day. And if you compare those, that means 75% or more of the wastewater flows from INI. And the rest is sanitary sewer. So we're spending a lot of money with blowers and treatment and regulations to treat groundwater. And the lift stations and the wear and tear on the grit pumps and everything else. So once we went through, obviously, the collection system is the biggest concern right now. The treatment system is doing great, maintaining its regulatory permit, no permit violations, the lift stations are humming along. We started looking at alternatives to address it. So for the collection system, we ruled out the no-action option because obviously we've got a big problem and we need to address it. And there's about 33,000 feet of VCP sewer in the system. So the first alternative we looked at is cured-in-place pipes, rehabilitation. And CIPP, they come in and they actually slide oxygen-pregnated felt sock in from one manhole to the other, and then they inflate it with steam, it cures. And when it's done, it's a fully structural pipe, it's like PVC, and it lines the old pipe. Some of the drawbacks, if there's a sag or a bend, we can't correct that. To really get groundwater out, you have to dig up each service and put in inserted T, but you can also reinstate them from inside with a little robot, but you can still get some leakage from the service lines around it. The second alternative we looked at would be pipe bursting. And pipe bursting, they have a big metal head that gets pulled hydraulically through the pipe and it pushes the old pipe out of the way and pulls a new pipe behind it. In the cobaly soils here, they tend to bounce around a lot, so we'd end up with gravity lines that had who knows what sags and plus, especially the gas companies hate it because it pushes against their old steel lines and stuff. So pipe bursting is probably not the best option here. There's a couple firms that do a lot of CIPP in Montana, but there are very few that do any pipe bursting as well. And the last, we looked at what it just open cut, traditional, get an excavator, start digging and replacing it all. The drawback with open cut is you gotta fix the surface, the gravel, pavement, everything you tear up. And with the CIPP, hopefully, we can reduce that quite a bit.
How does, what is the comparison on price or cost of alternative two versus alternative four?
We're getting to that.
Okay.
So this is a figure, it's a little hard to see, but the red line there in the middle, the one thing I hate about the zoom stuff, I don't get the laser pointer anymore. Does my mouse work? I do it. So this is Phase One from the last PR that the city was successful in getting grants for, and it included the design and construction of Phase One, and then the design of the blue is Phase Two. And we ranked those on the areas that have the highest structural defects, most INI, the highest severity it was rated. And this, especially the Phase One in the alley behind, is that Hauser or Hauser?
Yeah, Hauser and Broadway.
Yeah, it's really deep. It's 18 feet deep, it's a big line, tight alley there right off Broadway, we don't want to dig that up, so lining that is the way to go. And then we'll design Phase Two, the blue, and we'll bid it, and we sat down with Mike and his guys, and we broke it into Phase Two, A, B, C, D, depending on where they're having the most trouble. If there's enough money or contingency, we'll hopefully get part of Phase Two built. But the proposed project moving forward would be the construction of Phase Two and the design-construction of Phase Three, which I'm getting ahead of myself. But this kind of shows, and then everything in Cyan are all the lines in the system that need to be replaced over time that we've identified because the city's been slowly videoing everything and we're identifying at all of those areas documented structural defects or problems. So when we look at costs, we don't look at just capital costs to build it, we look at lifecycle costs, which includes capital costs, the O and N costs over the life of it. In this case, it actually will reduce O and N by fewer backups, having to go in there, less wear and tear on the grit pumps down at the lagoons. Whereas if we were doing a new lagoon system, there's going to be additional costs for blowers and stuff over the years. And then they have us factor in the salvage value at 20 years, which I don't know if you'd ever dig those pipes up and salvage them, but the grant agencies make me factor it in. So lifecycle costs, alternative C2, the CIPP, to do all those pipes, we estimate it'd be about $10.9 million, and to do it open cut would be about $13.7 million. So there's about an extra $2 million in there to do it open cut because of the surface restoration.
But that includes the streets on top of it, Ben?
The trench on top of it, not the full street, just the trench, just a patch. So, but there's a, that's the cost estimate to do everything. So from there.
Makes and match?
We can. So from there, we go to a preferred alternative, and what we do is we plug it into a decision matrix, we look at the lifecycle costs, O and N considerations, not just costs, but what's going to help free up Mike and his crew, you know, where they're having the most headaches, spending the most time permitting, social impacts, environmental impacts, sustainability, public health and safety, obviously, is paramount, and land acquisition can slow up a project if it's involved, so we always think about that. We also weight these, lifecycle costs usually get 10 because everybody's concerned what user rates are going to be and what it's going to cost. And then the rest, depending on, are weighted anywhere from one to 10. So that decision matrix is really small up there, but you can see we went through lifecycle costs were weighted 10, O and N 7, I hope Manizer's trying to read that. But as we go through the alternative C2, the CIPP scored a 265 versus the open cut at 208, so that would be our preferred, the preferred alternative and our recommendation is that would be the one to look at as we move forward. We also have to remember with the CIPP, it's not 100% lining because we'll go through and you evaluate the videos of each block, and if there's an offset joint or something we can't line, what we have to do is called a spot repair. We have to dig up that specific spot, correct that before you line it. So there is some spot repairs included in there, but they're included in that cost estimate. So it's not realistic for the city to tackle the whole 12.4 million at once and just take it on as a giant project, which would take us the next two or three years. But, so we've broken it into phases, and I kind of mentioned this before when we were looking at the map. In 2022, when we did the initial wastewater PR, Phase One was the alley over here off Broadway, Phase Two was the next highest severity section. We applied for the grants, were successful in those grant applications. We helped start designing here in June on that Phase One and Two and get it bid yet this year. It did get delayed about a year because of the big flood and we kind of pushed it to the back burner while we were dealing with other stuff. So we've looked at phasing by, you know, the worst priority in the areas where we identify, you know, big structural defects or things going on. So the proposed projects would include Phase One, like I said, it's already underway. Design of Phase Two is included in that project. We may get part of it built if there's enough money or we get good bids. If not, we're assuming, we did this assuming we don't get any of Phase Two built, so the next project will be building Phase Two, which is already designed or will be, and then adding Phase Three. And Phase Three, sitting down with Mike and the crew and where they're having the most trouble with backups, is all the areas that we can't line that have to be open cut. They have several areas where there's combined sewer service, like four or five services all come together and it's fixed line, and they're backing up on a regular basis. So we need to put in an access sewer main and split those because the guys are spending too much time dealing with regular backups. So that's the next priority for Public Works. So that's what we identified as Phase Three is all the areas that have to be open cut, aren't candidates for lining. And so this map shows, the blue again is still the Phase Two where we hope we can line, and then these various areas in, I think that's a Menchon, I don't have it, but it looks pink. Our areas, like this curve here, they can video all this sewer until they get to this curve and then it goes underwater somewhere in here. So we know there's a big problem there. We don't know what the problem is until we dig it up. This area right here in Clab, next to Finn Park, two years ago, or three years ago, they could video it, and now since the flood, they can't get a camera through it. We don't know if it collapsed or if.
I think, and this is an added FYI, there's a home over there, I think I've left you a message on this, there's a home over there that has water going through their basement constantly and they can't pump it out. I mean, it just, it's always there.
Right.
So, oh, I'm sure it's related.
Not only is there a lot of problems with the collection system, they're getting worse fast, you know, and the flood obviously didn't help anybody, but we know this went from being a lining candidate to now we need to open cut it. There's a cleanout on the end instead of a manhole, and I don't think you guys can even get in that cleanout, can they? So something happened, it's still flowing, but it's partially collapsed or they can't get a camera, but we don't know. And then up here, this is one of the areas where these are services that all tie together and need to be a main thing here, and then going up in here, there's a bunch of services tied together. So that would be the Phase Three, is these open cut areas, to address those areas that we know are structurally, you know, they're backing up and they're going to back up the home at some point. So they're pretty high priority. So the cost, breaking it down, is just over $2 million, $2,081,000 to do construction of Phase Two and design and build Phase Three is our cost estimate there, which is still a big project, but a more palatable chunk of the pie, I guess, you know, we can tackle it. So once we have that preferred alternative, we start looking at what funding is available. As a background, a lot of the state grant programs and even some of the federal ones, they'll get what's called a target rate. The Department of Commerce, well, this is before I started, I've been doing this for 20-plus years, they did a study statewide of all the water and sewer rates. They decided they wanted all the communities to have some skin in the game before they'd give them a grant. So they looked at all the water and sewer rates, and then they compared it to the median household income of each community, so it was a specific number to that community. And what they came up with is for a combined average residential rate, water and wastewater, they said a community should be paying 2.3% of the MHI. If it's water only, it's 1.4%, wastewater only is 0.9. And then they used the MHI data from the American Communities Survey, the ACS, which we still have yet to talk to anyone that's ever talked to them, so I don't know where to get their data. It used to be the Census Bureau, but now it's just ACS. And the Department of Commerce is currently using the 2015 to 2019 version. They list the MHI for Red Lodge at $48,311. That puts your target rate for combined at $92.60 a month. The average water rate, assuming 5,000 gallons of usage and your current rates, is 53.26, it'd be 94% of the water target rate. Your average sewer rate is 57.29, 158% target rate. Combined, you're at 119% of the target rate. So you're eligible for other grants.
Sure.
You're already above the target.
And just to add to that, that was why we had the rate increase about six years ago that kind of estimated up is because we found out, when we went in for grants, they said, you're not charging enough, you can't get grants because you're not within that range. And so that was where the rate increases and kind of automatic rate increases came from. So we don't, this had just been locked for years and years and years, and it was costing us money.
Yeah, but opportunities.
Yes, yep.
So some of the common programs, the Montana Coendowment Program through the state, it used to be called TSEP, we thought we should change the name, so we did. It is through the coendowment, it's a biannual grant, they're due May of the even year, so they're due May 23rd this year. The process is a community applies for the grants in May of the even year, gets ranked by the Department of Commerce and forwarded to the legislature around January, and then the legislature actually accrues it and awards grants about May of next year. So it's a lengthy process, it's every other year. A community can apply for up to $500,000 if your rates are above target rate, 625 if your rates are over 125% of target rate, and 750 if you're over 150%. They do require a 50-50 match, and they can't be more than 50% of the project cost, obviously, it's a 50-50 match. The DNRC also has a renewable resource grant loan program. Its focus is to conserve, manage, develop, and protect renewable resources. Wastewater projects fit this criteria really well because you discharge the Rock Creek, you've got a lot of high amount of groundwater, you've got, if groundwater is flowing into your pipes, it's logical to say that untreated sanitary sewer is flowing out of your pipes into the groundwater. So it's obviously a good fit for the program. The last round in 2022, the city was successful at getting MSEP and RRGLO grants for the Phase One projects, which we're starting. So these are both great sources. Community development block grant, communities can also apply for public facility grants out there. You have to have over, it's actually 51% low to moderate income, and they list you at 49%. It's kind of a double-edged sword, you don't want to have an LMI that high, but it also means you're not eligible for the funding, so. Rural development through the USDA, they offer grant loan packages. That term is really small, I mean, the eligibility is, again, determined by your MHI for the community, except they are using the 2020 ACS data. The City of Red Lodge, where you fall is in their lowest tier in what they call the poverty level, which probably wants to be in the poverty level, but it's pretty high, it's like 63,000 or something, or 58, it's 50. And then the intermediate is 58 to 63. It means that you're eligible for up to 75% grant funding and the lowest interest rate, which is currently 2.125%. Even though you're eligible for up to 75%, we typically on some of our projects see the best of the 50-50 grant home split. Rural development is a 40-year term, so it stretches way out there. The other source of low-interest loan funds is the State Revolving Fund through Montana EQ. They, their current interest rate is 2.5%. They have a 20-year term, which is, matches a little better for funding and stuff, I hate the 40 years, we can get away with from it. They also have potential loan forgiveness that they can give for the wastewater side, it's up to 49% of the project with a $1 million max. You have to be above the target rate. I reached out to Anna Miller, DNRC, who runs that sort of program. I asked what would be a reasonable assumption for planning, and she said, well, I suggested what is 30% a reasonable assumption, and she agreed it was, but was quick to clarify she was not guaranteeing, you know, the funding or anything at the planning level until we actually get into the numbers, but there's a good chance the city could qualify for some forgiveness there. On the water side, we've done the last, we did get forgiveness on the lift station project because we had missed our loan, so we got wastewater forgiveness on it. And the last two water projects, we also qualified and the city got between them both 500 on each one, so a $1 million in loan forgiveness for those two water projects over in Hauser and Hayton. So I think that's a really good source for you guys as well. So I think that's a really good source for you guys as well. So once we do that, we put them into a big funding scenario that I can't show on a slide and even begin to make it legible. And the scenario that is most favorable for the city would be going after the MSEP grant, RRGL grant. Monty and Mike sat down and said they could dedicate half a million of sewer reserves toward the project. Because you guys have been doing really great managing your sewer and water funds and building reserves. So that lessens the debt. And then the rest would be SRF loan, again, assuming 30%, you get 286 feet in forgiveness and about 700 in the loan. The sewer enterprise fund has sufficient debt capacity right now because they just paid off the loan through the lift station. That you could take on this loan without doing a rate increase at all. So it's already built into the rate, but it suddenly became free because you paid off early the other day. So I don't get to say that very often, there's not going to be a rate increase. So potential implementation schedule, again, grant applications, RRGL due next Wednesday, the 15th, MSEP due the 23rd. The city decides to move forward, we would submit those grant applications. We would, could go ahead because the city's putting so much in from reserves with their own money and start the survey and the design this fall. Design it over the winter, spring to get the grants next spring. And we could go to bid right away with the grant money instead of going to design. So you're, you're ahead of the rest of the communities and you save a year of interest at 3% on $2 million is a lot of money. And construction costs just keep going up. So that's kind of the, we followed the same schedule that was laid out before, but like I said, that flood happened and we're a year behind on that unfortunately. But that would be the proposed potential implementation schedule. That gives you guys lots of leeway too. Similar to the phase one, we can push it back. Cause Mike and his guys can only have, they have so much capacity with the stormwater going on and water projects and there's a lot going on in Red Lodge. So I kind of flew through that, but now questions, comments, and you've been asking as we go, which is great.
That the, so that two point, that part that we can do without a rate increase, is that just the next phase? I apologize, how, that is for two and three?
Yes. That, that, the proposed project is phase two and three. And yes, you guys can do that without a rate increase. And then I would anticipate in two years, I will be back here. And depending on Mike's priorities and where they're at, we'll either be looking at going after grants to leverage your guys' reserve fund. For water, sewer or stormwater. Unfortunately, we have to take one. We can only apply for one, we can't do multiple, so between the three facilities. But if we can take 500,000 in reserves and leverage and a $700,000 loan, so 1.2. And get 800 in grant funding out of that, you know, there's pretty good return on investment. Almost doubles the city's money. So if we can keep phasing it and take advantage of the opportunities every two years and keep it rolling. And the city's been great about updating all the water and sewer and stormwater PRs. And it put them in a great position with all your planning documents to take advantage of the ARPA funding. And able to grab a couple of million dollars in grant funding there. So it's been, it's really great how the city is proactively looking out on all these projects and the various things. Cause you've got a lot of infrastructure that's 100 years old and you've got your money out of it, but it, it needs to be addressed.
We appreciate the assist and the guidance too.
Well, thank you. Other questions?
Yes, John? So you got a lot of me, you were mentioning 12 million, 12 million dollars, is that all three phases?
No, 12 million would be, if we just. There we go. If we just went in and replaced every piece of sewer main in town, it would be replaced in one big project, it'd be about 12 million.
So the, the 2 million is what parts of that then, just the?
It's.
Meaning how much less of that do you leave out to have our cost be 2 million? Or is it coming from, because we're getting money from other sources?
Well, I mean, if there's 12 million, we're doing 2 million of it, at least 10 million, it still has to be done. Which is why I'm saying there will be future phases still down the road.
But these are the tight end service lines and the.
So the blue is phase two, which would be hopefully we're going to slip line those. Okay. And then the, the magenta pink ones are the areas that we've identified with Mike and his crews where they're having backups and problems that have to be open cut. And we would go in and try and fix those. And then hopefully when we get those taken care of, we did something similar over behind the Napa. There was an alley there when we did the water through where we found all these services. So we replaced that block of sewer. And it was freezing every winter backing up and the guys still tell me that's the best project out of anything I've done here in the last 12 years. You got one block of sewer and I'm like, okay. But they're having, they're, tell me, Mike, there's some apartments up here?
Yeah, there's.
That are backing up.
There's a mess up there.
And then a couple of houses and they're all tied to one service. And then here, there's again a orange service that goes up there and picks up several houses and.
There's six houses.
Six.
Four inch line there.
Yeah.
And there's no way we can scoop it, but there's a problem. There's, there's no action.
Yeah.
So the rest of the system needs to be slip lined because of ionized issues.
Yes.
But that can wait. Well, there's no huge structural efficiencies that are causing backups and.
These are the areas that when we sat down this spring with the crew where they're having backups and problems. And the ones in blue were after that alley off of Broadway, the next highest priority where they're in the worst condition. And so we're trying to start it, you know, with the worst ones. I would love to do the 12 million and just fix it all, but it's not, it's just not realistic. Then I would be raising rates a lot, but.
And follow Harry? Cause there's, there's, there's a couple of these that I hear about pretty darn close to weekly.
And we're, that's why they're at the top of the list. We gotta get them taken care of.
Well, the sewers generally in the alleys or in the streets as well or mixed or?
They're mixed, they're mostly in the alleys, but there are quite a few that run down, like Platte has one running down it. I think there's, there's a few.
Where they're like, or billards have some, I think.
Yeah, they, they generally run down the alley, but there are a few that run down the streets. Platte is the one I know for sure that runs down the street. Oh, just that one in there. Yeah, Platte House.
So council.
It is Hagan, Hagan has the main in the street.
Yeah.
Hagan is the one that has the main.
Yeah, there's an alley, it's on that east side.
So council, I'm sorry.
And so we're looking, if, if council says yay, move forward with this, we're realistically looking at 2025 before we're able to start addressing these? Or some.
2025 would be the earliest we'd go to construction, summer of 2025 or the fall of 2025. We could start the design using the city's reserve funds if you guys wanted to roll the dice and get ahead of the game.
I was, I was gonna say, what happens if, if one of our problem spots just explodes on its, I mean, that, then it's an emergency, it has to be addressed right then.
And that's usually a spot repair where you're going to go in and fix, you know, 30, 40.
Put a band-aid on it.
Yeah, well, I, I see a lot of those are like individual spots, so.
Well, but they're a block. Most of them are a block or more of new sewer main or replacing services. The, the scale, it looks small, but those, yeah, that's a full block.
Yeah, it's only just big, how come?
Yeah, that, this is that whole block by Finn Park. And this unkindly, that's like three manholes, I think, somewhere in there. This is another block and, yeah, another block up there by the apartments off White, that's a block plus. So it, it, I mean, hopefully it hangs on until we can get to it next summer, but.
So the blue, you're just gonna line?
That is our hope, yes. Because it's, it'd be more economical if we don't have the surface restoration, we're not tearing up the alleys and the streets.
And windows, all, all that project would be a little tough path deal.
We can, when we get to it, we can evaluate that. We don't want to dig up the surfaces in that, um, phase one. To the 18 feet deep, it's a 20-foot alley. And there's lots of other utilities on top of it. But in these, if it's conducive and I would prefer to dig up each surface and make it the right way. But we'll have to look at them on a case-by-case basis. That's the fun Kirsten's going to be having here starting in June.
I, I heard an assertion or a comment this week that made me do a double take. Somebody said when it was, when it came to covering the road, it was the same price to pave the road as it was to basically repave a ditch going down the road. Did I mishear it? Were they wrong? Or is, does, do those two pieces, can you tell what they were talking about?
I'm not sure of the context, but the paving is always bid either on like a square yard basis or tonnage. And the wider it gets, the more expensive it gets winterly.
Okay, so, cause the, the, the comment was made that it was as cheap to pave the whole road as it was to do a ditch. To repair a ditch going down the middle of it. And I was going, there's a piece of that equation I'm missing.
No, that's, that's not, that's not the case at all.
With more material involved in.
Well, but, but that's assuming that's the only factor, that's why.
So if we're repairing, let's say they cut 12 foot, they're really neat and they have a 12-foot cut in the pavement for their utility trench. And there's 24 feet of pavement, it would literally cost twice as much to pave the whole road as.
That, that makes more sense to me than, than what they said.
Yeah, it would, because.
Or that when I understood them to say, how's that?
It's double the material and the labor and it's all bid. We typically do it per lineal foot of pipe. And give them, you know, a pay limit, but by doing it by per lineal foot, it encourages them to keep it as tight as they can and minimize the disruption. But we can bid it on square yards. Some of the years we have to bid on square yards because pipe's on edge of the road and you don't have pavement, parking lanes, so it's half gravel, half pavement. Then we have to do square yards because we're half gravel and half pavement restoration on the trench. But no, it would not be just on cheap to pay the whole.
I'm, I'm sure, well, I said, I felt like there's something I'm missing or they didn't, I didn't understand. What I understood is not what they said and that's why I just thought I double checked, so.
It would be twice as much typically and I would love to repair the whole street as we go, but. That's the other thing is we can justify these funding sources like SRF, they have federal, because the money comes through EPA. So they have federal guidelines, what they can pay for and project eligibility. So do each of the grant thing, funding sources. Streets is not an eligible project. So we can say, well, we gotta repair the trench over the pipe. And they're like, okay, that's part of the pipe project. We start paving outside reasonable pay limits above that trench. Then they're like, no, you can't, we're not going to pay to repair your streets, so.
Nobody wants to fix.
Everybody wants to, nobody wants to pave.
Maybe you just need to go back to gravel. All of them.
Harder, harder to plow. But we're getting there step by step, no? I have some communities that are seriously, I mean, there's serious spots, milling it up a little pavement they have and going back to gravel.
Yeah, wood mix.
Yeah. But, yeah, we were going to get Mike Greaves teasing like he needs to get on the potholes or by the post office and stuff.
What's that?
I was going to tease you about your potholes, although you haven't heard it yet.
We, we're out patching this week.
In the rain?
Nah, we had a, we had a day in there. We're, or the day before it rained, we got, we put out a ton of patch material.
Yeah, that's just, it's, that's the way it goes, long out all this oil and stuff this week and then it rained all week and you can't get out and do, get ground up. And they were all excited to go and patch potholes and.
Do something with potholes to slow people down, especially the ones that hide.
So are there any other questions on where we're going? Yeah, yeah.
Does this involve any manhole replacements?
Yes, we will replace the manholes on the lining projects. What we do is we'll come out and do a manhole inventory. We'll come out physically and work with Mike's guys and we go evaluate every manhole. And there's complete replacements. Some of them just need a new bench, no poor new bench in the bottom, it can be lined to stop ionize. And some of them are going to be good. And we'll evaluate each one on the lining portion. And then if we're going to open cut those other sections, generally we just put in a new manhole as we go by because we've got it blown open and. And some of those need manholes, like the one in Finn Park, the cleanup, they can't use, it needs to be a manhole. Cause they can't get their camera in it or clean anything with a jetter.
Well, my mom and dad's house is really close to that and they have sand in their sewer. Literally sometimes they'll back up sand up into their house.
I think I know where it's coming from.
They're like a block away from that.
I mean, they could camera it three years ago and now they cannot.
Maybe that would help their situation too.
I, hopefully, cause it's sucking in something.
Yeah.
If it, if it broke or it partially collapsed, we know it's, and the groundwater's come up so much in that area of town.
Yeah, well, then she gets bugs coming up into the bathtubs and the sinks and stuff, like little sewer bugs. She's not happy. That's fun, I know.
I don't know that I can do anything about the bugs. But yes, we definitely.
What are both the manhole the town made of? Are they, they, Henry or they?
There's some brick ones, there's a lot of concrete ones. They want to try to dig up one that's made out of little tractor tires. We, we did get some interesting stuff in Red Lodge.
But, and there's some of them over on the pottery, there is no drain at all. I mean, you just, it's the rain, it rains and it's a big lake.
That'd be the storm sewer, which would be a separate project, which they're coming down. This week and then it got rained out, but. But yeah, the manholes are, the older ones, a lot of them, there's, there's brick, not necessarily like cinder block, but there's some brick ones. And then a lot of them are concrete, but concrete's in varying condition over the years.
Do you replace it with fiberglass or concrete?
Concrete, typically do concrete. And if the concrete's mostly structurally sound and it's, but they're leaking the seam and stuff with there, we have, there's spray in liners or insitute liners you can put in there. That will stop the ionizing the manhole as well and.
We tried that show for the fourth, like we did like, or 20 manholes. And it was cheap and it, it stopped, I mean, these were manhole that you could, you open the lid and there's water shooting.
Shooting through the seam? Yeah, because they used to have a random seal and it just. So we'll go through as part of the design and evaluate each manhole and determine if it needs to be replaced, repaired, lined or. Some of them you open and, some of that concrete back in the day is better than anything you can get today. It's, it's hard and it lasts forever. Some of them just need a new top and we just have to evaluate them case by case. Dave, did you have anything else?
I'm good. Anything from the public?
Really appreciate y'all coming and your questions. Does it seem like we're on the right track? All right.
Is this report online or?
So this will be, this will be on Zoom and we'll, we'll, we'll post the recording online.
Okay. So, yeah, we will.
I probably should have had people state their names and set for comments.
I have a sign machine, so we have everybody that was here.
All right, sounds good.
And so they'll have the, the recording online and then tomorrow we're going to provide a PDF to the city of the draft report. And they're going to put it on their website. There's 22 PRs out there, all their PRs are on the website if you ever want to look at them. But they'll send out the link for the draft. And then once they approve it, hopefully it's Tuesday night, not the next Tuesday night. But, um, once they approve it, they will finalize it and put the final with all the appendices and stuff on and it'll be available. But the draft, Monty and I are going to try and get it out by lunch tomorrow. So if anybody wants to look at it and come.
This slideshow will be in the packet, so that'll go out tomorrow for the packet for Tuesday's meeting. And then we'll have the draft, which lacks the appendices, up tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We visited with him at the coffee shop. My best civil engineer myself, I went, watching it going on and it's kind of.
I've, I've never met a civil engineer. No, no, that's an engineer with a sense of humor, sorry.
Do I stop the recording or do you?
Uh, yeah, you can.
Yeah, you just say you're done and then go ahead and go.
Okay, we're done?
And, and meeting?
I guess that's yours job to say we're done, maybe.
You can't end right there. And then it'll disconnect the.